All right. Good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, the notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'd ask that our superintendent confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great. Thank you. Why don't we rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everyone. We have six School Board members present tonight, so we recognize a quorum. Aaron Dove had a pre-scheduled conflict and has an excused absence for tonight, but we will proceed with our agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. The next item on our agenda is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience today who wishes to participate in public participation? Just want to be sure I don't miss anyone, so I'll call it again. Does anyone choose to participate in public participation? All right. I don't see anyone there, so we will move to the next item, which is our consent agenda. There are four items in the consent agenda. The minutes of the August 17th, 2020, regular school board meeting, dispersments posted to September 14th, 2020, ratification of contracts, and resignation. I would move to approve the consent agenda. Would I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. The motion carries. All right, which takes us to the superintendent's report and the back-to-school update. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Wimmer.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone, I know we started the year with three instructional options, and we made our final selections instructional choices somewhere around mid-August. At that time, we had about 1,000 outstanding choices. People had not made their instructional choice. We did some automated calls, emails, reminders, and then ended up with 600 who received personal calls from our staff, so just thank you. Largely, our technology staff took that on and gave personal phone calls to walk people through what their choices were so that they could make their options in a timely manner. We were able to batch enroll those who registered on time, and those who didn't were kind of in a second wave. Again, we continue out of our approximately 6,500 students to have 950 enrolled in full-time virtual options, 350 in some type of hybrid where they're taking one or more courses through the virtual academy, and the remainder onsite in-person. In speaking with our principals and our staff, you know, it was a smooth startup in sites, in-person. There was a lot of pre-planning, and they said, you know, in some ways, it was smoother than years past. And I said, well, all the intentional planning and resetting of routines and expectations, and kids just being joyous around being back in school and seeing each other and being in classrooms and on playgrounds and in lunchrooms and having that interaction. So that's been delightful, and we'll continue to share kind of photos that capture those moments. So we're happy about that. The other piece that is not going well, I am not one to sugarcoat, so I think the board knows that of me, and our families will learn that as well. It's been a roller coaster with our virtual partner. About three weeks prior to the launch of the school year, they had scaled, and they were having issues with some of their platforms. Mid-weekend, they shifted platforms on us, and it kind of broke us into four segregated systems, and some of those did not have the functionality we were accustomed to, so we ended up having to hand roster. Our team worked through the weekend and through some really late nights to hit a target date so that we would be ready for startup. So while we hit all those target dates, the Edmentum side of the house has been experiencing significant trouble. Some of the highlights for us are around customer service. Their response, they were saying usually their volume is about 1,000 calls a day. They had prepped and doubled their staff, as did we, in preparing for virtual learning, but they're receiving about 3,000 calls. One of the things that we had a meeting with Edmentum executives Friday night at 8:00 PM, that was high on our list, and they have since dispatched to us our own personal technology coordinator. So our families can continue to just reroute your technology concerns to us so that we can work directly with that person to resolve those, so they're not waiting for responses in both camps. Speaking of customer service, we have about 10 retirees who have come back into service for us. They're manning phone lines, handling the dedicated emails, just for perspective. Since August, we've handled just shy of 2,000 emails just to the WBVA account, not including all the other ones we received, 400-plus calls just to that line, and then an additional 600 calls for just tech support throughout the system. So that's kind of the sense of that load. But again, we planned for, staffed. I think one of the issues that we ran into was there was questions that we could not answer. There were technical issues and concerns occurring on the Edmentum side, and as we talk with families, you know, okay, hearing something is better than nothing versus kind of us waiting for the answer, but it's also equally as frustrating to give people a non-answer. Like, I don't, we're aware of it, and we're working on it. You know, that's not acceptable to any of us, and that was part of our conversation Friday night, was to reset customer service, both internally and externally. So we feel we've got a good plan moving forward. We're also going to do some dedicated work across grade-level teams, so people have a point person. And we'll also set up a daily dashboard of known issues, so you can check there first. So again, we're not flooding our emails with, you know, 200 of the same thing and requiring a response. It's, oh, that's a known issue, they're on it, and here's what we're doing about it, and what's the ETA and the correction. Again, that dispatched Edmentum staff member who works solely for our district will be critical in us moving through those known issues. I know tonight, our Assistant Superintendent Laura Jackson sent out a communication to families just describing what are the known issues, what are the things that we're seeing, what is our plan for correction? You know, and it's been things around parent logins, or, you know, things when the rosters were pulled over, logins were off by one, so us having to reset passwords. So it was just things that were, you know, equally as frustrating to us as our families that we continue to work to correct. So we see the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, on some of those things, but continue to, like today, I was just checking, and we only have 55 emails left in our queue for the WBVA. So we've reset and kind of brought that down to zero so that people can with confidence email and know that they're going to get a timely response future forward. The other piece is around teachers. On the Edmentum side of the house, we see them shifting teachers on us, and we're not okay with it. When we had a discussion on Friday, our vision and our commitment to our students and families was a dedicated teacher. Whether it was our hire or theirs, it would be a dedicated teacher in a cohort of learners that were our kids. Edmentum, in our Friday conversation, I asked, could they or couldn't they meet that commitment for me, because I was going to move forward in an alternate direction if they couldn't? I'm thankful that they were honest. They said they were responding to other families wanting to be able to be more flexible in their schedules, so they had put out a schedule of the week, so you could pick, you know, which on one end is great. It provided families with the flexibility of put what works in your schedules. However, it would create potentially a new group of students every day in that class. That is not our vision. That is not what we're standing by. So we had already posted to migrate those teachers over to be our staff and migrate the kids into our teachers. We're having significantly less issues with our own staff teaching our kids and preserving that classroom environment. And they started with our staff in a homeroom environment and got to know them, and our staff has been very responsive and creative as they move forward. So again, moving them forward with our staff. We're seeing also a discrepancy in some of the curricular pieces, where it's, it might be either too high or low, and Edmentum staff were just kind of going with a party line, so to speak, around, well, here's what it is. No, that's not the experience we expect for our students. We expect to differentiate our curriculum to meet kids where they are and either push them forward or redesign some of those elements that we know are not developmentally appropriate. One of the examples was asking a six-year-old to write a story with a beginning, middle, end, full plot, and characters. That is completely developmentally inappropriate. You're happy if a six-year-old can hit a beginning, middle, and end in a retelling as well as something in writing. So that is what we are doing again. Lenny Hansen, our Director of HR, had already put the word out. We've already have people queued up, and we'll start migrating. Tim Harder is instrumental, our Director of Technology, because we don't want kids to lose what they've got working so far, because we just want to migrate that cleanly for our parents. We don't want what they've experienced with the start-stop. So that's been one of the teacher concerns. And again, that's more of a K-5 issue. They're stabilizing their teacher selections at those older grades, but we have talked with them around, they'll push out some messages asking for platforms that we don't have that aren't supported by Edmentum, like, oh, you need to add Word, and like, no, that's not part of your program. So getting succinct messages to their staff from ours, as well as their directors, is something that we're working on. And then we wanted a clear path around communication, so we were all kind of sitting in the "we don't know the answers" piece and making sure we were communicating with multiple guardians. In the early days, it was going to a primary guardian versus both guardians and the student, who are students 512. So that's something we're cleaning up, and again, targeting some grade-level customer service around unique needs. So known issues are identified, communicated right away to that grade level so that they're not worried about it, and they know when that fixes. And again, just hearing, and trying to find that balance of too much communication coming at them and not enough, and making that succinct. So we have a couple program leads, Aaron Faust, Kevin Hyde, and cleaning up those methods of communication. So again, our families aren't getting it, like, bombarded with, from multiple people, so we're sensitive to that piece as well. So I think we have, like I said, it's been quite a roller coaster ride. We've got a really dedicated team who's worked throughout all weekends into the night hours to course-correct and make sure we're delivering and on-point for our promise for our students and our families. And every kind of central office staff member is overseeing one part of that project to help with the heavy lifting to do that. So I'm confident we will be course-correcting and communicating with families. So I would encourage them to, again, reach out to the WBVA email and phones. We've got that reset. We're out from underneath the volume there, and we'll continue to do those. Any questions around virtual?
All right, take a number. I'll go down the line.
I get to go first. So my first comment that I'd like to make to all involved, thank you for all of the extra effort. I know this has been an extremely trying year for everyone in every way, shape, and form. So, you know, kudos to you. Thank goodness you're here, and you're at the helm, so thank you very much. My question would be, now that school has started, and, you know, I heard this from many parents, that one of the reasons many people chose the online option was that they didn't want a disruption for their students. You know, that was a major concern, which I can appreciate. So now that we've been in school for a few weeks, and I think we're doing a phenomenal job of, you know, maintaining whatever is going on at the schools, and it's a very positive experience for the students, do we have students who want to come back to school as opposed to doing virtual? And can they actually come and go like that? I mean, now it's been two weeks. Can they actually transfer back to regular school? Or how is that working, and is there a cutoff for that?
So that's a great question. In the beginning, we would have held that cutoff to be in the first week in a regular ad drop because of this experience. Again, I'm not going to force families when we say one thing, and we're still in the middle of this. Any family can reach out to their principal and discuss transition back to in-person. It would, it might take a day or two because they want to check class sizes. They need to put furniture back in rooms that's been cleared out, those kinds of things. So just work directly with your principal. Conversely, as we're adding, if, I've had the same situation. Something changed in our family. Can I go full virtual? Can I do this? Yes, talk to us this week, and we can see what we can do to accommodate requests. And then after that, then we'll hold until our January. We'll start reaching out to families around Thanksgiving time in November and look at that clean semester break. But again, where we've had this rocky startup, we absolutely want to honor and get families to the right spot for them. I think some are realizing too, especially with our younger learners, like, whoa, I can't spend three hours a day doing these pieces, and we want families to be in the right spot for their students and themselves.
Thank you.
My turn. I want, first of all, I want to echo Nancy's comments about how I'm really pleased with how West Bend School District has responded to the challenges that we've had with Edmentum. Sounds to me like it's a scalability issue, which doesn't surprise me, I guess, that they were probably weren't expecting the number of students that they did. That said, do you feel like they're, in your opinion, after meeting with them on Friday, do you feel like they're capable of adjusting? Or will this be a long-term relationship with them? Or are we looking at other options?
So I think specifically for K-5, what I've seen from our teachers who are absolute trailblazers in this, we want to provide them some of the pieces for support, but they're going to build and deliver a more quality product. I think that'll be short-term for us to scale up, and we talked about that and prefaced that in our conversation on Friday so that we would have that ability in our terms and kind of go à la carte on what we needed, and they were absolutely supportive. So we'll be looking at and taking the pieces that we want, and how are we growing, and what does that look like, short and long term?
So contract-wise, with them, they're not viewing that as breaking the contract, or, okay?
No. If you wanted to talk in those terms, it's clear breach on their end. And that's what I brought up on Friday. So they will let us do whatever we need, and we'll respond accordingly.
Excellent. Thank you.
And just for the community, I was at Rotary this afternoon, and I said, you're going to find a couple things about me. One, I'm a fierce advocate for students. Two, I'm responsive. And three, I'm a fiscal steward of the community's dollars, and we have not made payments to the company. So just for our community to know.
Again, thank you. Let me take this off. Thank you to you, the administration, the teachers, the families for the patience. We've seen some emails come through, and I'm sure there's a lot more that have come to you and Laura directly, and we appreciate the angst that's out there. So many questions come to mind, but I guess, at this point, we're starting Week Three of the school year, and for those students who have been enrolled full-time in virtual, are they still waiting for Day One, or are they on Day 10, or Day 5? Kind of how far in are they relative to their in-building peers?
Sure. You look at, so that first week for both in-person and virtual, it was orientation and logins and those things. We wish that some of their courses and things would have been ready for them at that time to get in and practice, but for some students, there was no delay, and for others. And then it's interesting, one of the Edmentum known issues is some of their due dates are in 2050. All my students out there, no, you don't get 30 years to do your homework. Like, it's paced, but that's not the pace. So they're making corrections. And then, what we didn't know when we were rostering in there, we should have set September 8th as that course start date, and we set September 1. So some of our students received a message, like, you're behind. And they weren't, and that caused panic too. So it was, like you said, like, what day am I on? And we've talked about a backend fix with Edmentum around that, to reset the kids so that they, you know, don't think that they're behind on some of their coursework. But no, they're in and working on courses, and again, some families, it's been, nope, we were in right away and on, and for others, it's been a really hard grind.
Okay. Second question. I appreciate their leadership team's willingness to be on a call late on a Friday. I have to assume we're not the only one that's darkening their doorstep.
Correct. So there's 11 Wisconsin districts specifically. We've been working most closely with Oak Creek. They're very similar. They have 1,200 students. We have 1,300 students. And one of their staff members there are a week ahead of us, and one of their staff members literally came to my house over the weekend to help us avoid some of the pitfalls that they felt during startup and help us accomplish what we needed. And then their teams are connecting with our teams, so our program coordinators, so that our teachers aren't working in isolation, and they can work together on that. So I'm really excited about that partnership, and I'm sure we'll reach out to the other districts as well to support each other.
Thank you.
So, not at all to minimize any of the issues that we have, but have there been parents who have expressed satisfaction with the product? And maybe you can give some perspective there as well?
Sure, absolutely. So I think, you know, for every painful moment, we do have people reaching out and saying thanks. And what they're really thankful for is the choice and the opportunity, and they kind of came into it knowing we were going to be trailblazers and expected some bumps and bruises along the way. None of us expected to this degree. But those people are like, you know what, this is working for our family, or, you know, it's okay, we expected this. We just keep communicating with us and helping us along, and they have expressed that. So, you know, you're grateful for every moment. It's, you know, thank you for taking a moment and sending kind words. The team is working really hard to right the ship, so to speak, so.
Great. Other questions for the superintendent with regard to virtual?
What is the main method of communicating concerns to the district as it relates to Edmentum? Is it that email?
WBVA at, in our just traditional ending, at WBSD-schools.org. It's right on our main page, so you can go right into that queue. Again, there's a team of six of us behind the scenes, monitoring, looking at that, routing it, if you will, to the right person. As it bubbles up, is it technology, is it learning, is it this, is it simple ad drops? Our counseling team at the high school has taken over. They did orientation on the systems the other day. I've been working with them and have really stepped in and have done amazing work because the work on that high school end around transcripts and making sure kids are on the right path, they've prioritized looking at their seniors. They reviewed every single course selection, all of those pieces in the systems. And kids at the high school level can feel free to reach out directly to their current counselors. We have a new counselor who'll be specializing in the virtual avenues, but right now, everyone's staying with their high school counselor and can feel free to reach out. They can help you in that moment. You can set specific appointments with them, but they're checking those transcripts. So that would be the only alternate. If you're a high school student, feel free to directly go to your counselor.
And pretty soon, kindergarten through fifth grade will have West Bend teachers, and so obviously, if it's coursework-type stuff, go to your, go to that teacher for help or solving issues.
Absolutely. And our current K-5 teachers had started with them and created homerooms because there'll be times that we needed to have our teachers in front of kids, whether it was doing some testing, deploying some things. So those teachers have continued to build some kind of social-emotional homeroom components, things like that, and kept their arms wrapped around those kids so they'll be doing those pieces a little bit more consistently to help age transition. So we're thankful for that as well.
Thank you.
Questions regarding the update? Go ahead.
So then I, I think the other piece that's impacting our instruction is COVID-19, which, so I think I've got it here. So families, if you haven't seen it, we send communication. We do a weekly dashboard that's right on our website. We're very transparent. I've explained around some numbers and some metrics, where DHS gave us some metrics around where is your community at? And those metrics are designed to trigger conversations, which we have with our public health partners. And then we start unpacking those numbers to the local level for impact. So just because we're high doesn't mean, in the community, doesn't mean I need to step back and close. It means I need to have conversations, unpack the numbers. You'll see Public Health created an additional dashboard, which is around school-age students by zip code. Also, I've explained that this is private, public, parochial, homeschooled. It's all school-age children in the community, not just our students. So then you see us localizing the numbers so you know exactly what's occurring in our schools. One of the issues that we do face is when you're within six feet and you've got exposure, whether you're wearing the mask or not, you're considered a close contact and asked to quarantine when you've been exposed to a positive case for that 14-day period. We talked today with our county executive, because, you know, sometimes people will push back on that, well, that's just a guideline. Do we have to? And our county executive, in our conversation today, was going to be making some public statements around, this is what we need you to follow for our schools to stay and remain in service and open. And then we continue to work with Public Health around guidelines. We're entering into cold and flu season, so they've loosened those restrictions. It used to be looking for just one symptom, and now it's looking for multiple symptoms. And then there's some things around early entry. Let's say you were just sick, and it's determined to be viral, you've tested negative. There's some early entry components we're communicating. So that's something that we continue to work on, generally twice a week, with public health partners, area superintendents. But again, really working with our county executive today around the community messaging for all of us regarding what is that and what do we need to be doing, as well as the staffing required for contact tracing. So it will take hours. Our team goes in once you have, and thank you to our families. They are very quick at notifying us. They will, we will hear from our families before we hear from Public Health, so that allows us to move very swiftly, just based on them reporting. Yep, we've got a positive case. We can get into classrooms. We're measuring, you know, looking at those options. We're reviewing tapes, you know, what did recess look like? What did lunch look like? And really trying to only isolate to those who were direct contacts with a positive case so that we're being mindful, keeping as many kids as we can in school, but doing what we need to do to ensure that there's no school transmission for cases.
I have some questions. So because this has been brought to my attention by numerous parents who have concerns, and again, this has not directly happened to me, so I'm speaking from hearsay, so I'm trying to get some clarification. So Johnny, for instance, comes to school, and he's a high school student, and he doesn't realize he has COVID, obviously, but whatever. Gets home, finds out his test is positive. So it's my understanding that, you know, we're, we are not, we're wearing the masks in school, we're trying to maintain the social distance, not arguing that, but you also need to be in contact with someone for more than 15 minutes. Is that correct? So we're obviously being mindful of that. Okay. So now, we determined that Johnny potentially came in close contact with 12 fellow students. All 12 of these students are now quarantined for 14 days. Correct? Regardless of whether they can show a negative test?
Correct. At this time, that is the current Public Health guidance. Again, that changes often. So right now, they're going with illness, and that's where we see the early entry off a 10-day mark. You can come in and do early entrants, and we'll see how they kind of shape that going forward.
So again, this is not anything that our school is controlling, and this is not me yelling at Jen Wimmer or any other schoolperson. This is me, as John Q. Citizen, expressing serious concerns. The fact that our local hospitals and our local doctors' offices and dentist offices and anyone else has a less restrictive policy than our health department is putting on our students. So we're basically holding our students hostage at home, even if they're negative, and if they can prove a negative test. They can't return to school for 14 days.
So that, yep, there's nuances of testing as well. There's difference, we're learning all sorts of interesting things. So there's PCR tests or antigen tests, and it has to be a PCR-approved test for some of those early reentry. I think one of the things, the same thing you're expressing, we've talked about as well with our district nurse, as well as our public health nurses and across superintendents, because it will, it, I said, it's a house of cards. You're going to quickly unravel and start plucking out large groups, so what does it really look like? So those are still conversations we have with Public Health on a bi-weekly basis, as well as our team, so.
So if someone watching at home was irritated by this information that we're presenting this evening, for instance, they should probably call the county executive and have a conversation with him or the health department. But if I was someone who was very concerned, a parent who may have approached me at the grocery store, I would absolutely call the county executive immediately tomorrow morning to have this conversation, because this goes way beyond the school district. This is basically holding people hostage and forcing them to stay home even though they could prove that they are negative via a negative test.
Correct. You would want to think about the conditions probably many of you are facing in your own work. You'd have to have multiple negative tests. So there was talk, as we look at work environments. Many work environments just require a multiple negative test, the right kind of test, within so many days to clear that, but they have not. so many days to clear that, but they have not developed anything like that for students or learning environments.
And is our county conducting tests anywhere in the county?
Yes. If you, so our, our district nurses, as we engage in conversations, will help route families to testing. If you don't have a primary provider, our public health department will actually give tests. So they've made those available.
If there is a student who is in quarantine, can you describe what, what's their, what's their daily experience? Do they specifically, are there webcams? Are they able to participate in their classes? What, what does it look like for a quarantine student? I'm sure it depends on the grade level, but if you could at least generally describe that.
So I think first and foremost, one of the things you had said, well, if a student finds out that their test is positive, first of all, if you have pending test results, don't come to school until you receive them. So please make sure you're reviewing those questions around that. If anyone in your home is pending a test result, you, you need to stay home until we find out the answer to that. That's really helpful, because we've certainly run into that. And then when you talk about learning, so if, if our teacher's healthy, if our student is healthy, and, and all teachers are kind of getting into that groove of what does the new distance learning look like in patches? They can patch into the classroom, whether it's Google or things like that. What's really unusual right now is, you know, last year we were all live in a class in Google and engaged. Because of the implications for HIPAA, and it's a health situation, we have to have the laptop just facing the teacher, because technically students shouldn't know who's out in that, in that case. And, you know, some of the kids chuckle, it's like, well, everyone knows. But we still need to be protective of that. So that's an unusual piece where you don't maybe feel fully engaged, because you're not facing your class or interacting in that way. And that's something we're all facing, but that's designed that way for a reason to meet those guidelines.
I guess, sorry, one last thing. I, I would have concerns about the mental, you know, problems that we might be creating with our students. I mean, we have students who've been off of school for six months approximately, whatever you want to use for your timeline. Now they're finally back. Now, you know, they come to school and, you know, because of nothing that they've done, now they're stuck at home for 14 days, potentially out of the sports. And really, you know, I'm concerned about some of the kids' mental health issues that might be happening here because of these really insanely strict, you know, guidelines that our health department is forcing on our students. So, I mean, I really hope that, you know, people who are listening or even on this board, if you have the same concerns, I mean, we really need to speak up. This is for the betterment of our students here. And many of these students, you know, really, really rely on coming to school as the better part of their day, or, or being involved in sports is very important to them. And this isn't fair to them. I'm sorry. And I realize life isn't fair, and you can give me all those lessons, but you know what? Let's wait till the kids are at least out of high school before they learn that, you know, the world isn't a happy place. Let's, let's try and keep it happy while they're here.
I think one of the things that you touch on around that emotional health, and we're seeing this now as, you know, we have kids who are going into quarantine, you know, there's awareness that, hey, there's something out there, and it's, it's killing people, and it's scary. It's scary for a kid when all of a sudden, like, hey, I need to ask you to step up. But, you know, they're worrying, like, am I going to get this? Am I going to be hurt? Well, it doesn't, does someone in my family have it? You're, you're absolutely right around understanding those mental health pieces around fear and anxiety, or, as you said, like, what did I do wrong? Or anger around, like, this is ridiculous. Why do I have to do this? And feeling punished for, for nothing. So those are absolutely pieces that are there. We've had conversations with our district nurses around how to navigate those conversations with our kids, so that it's, it's not scary and it's, it's not that kind. So it's, that's absolutely something that weighs on us as we serve kids.
How were teachers and staff, you know, the past two weeks? Do we have several teachers and staff who are out or quarantining? Is that part of, I can't remember if that's part of your dashboard or not.
Yep.
It is?
Yep, it is. So we would talk about that. One staff member was placed in quarantine last week. We had some leading into the year who had to start a little bit later. But the same thing for our staff, you know, teachers are, I always say, any, anyone in a school has that culture of commitment where, you know, they're going to be the last man standing, and like, I'm going to come to school. It's, you know, just the sniffles, just this. And it's like, nope, you need to stay home too. And, and we'll figure out how to patch you in and, you know, do that kind of thing. But we, we want them to stay home and monitor their own health too. So, but yep, we absolutely, and we report, like I said, locally, whether it's staff or students.
Do you think it would be beneficial to the community and maybe to this board to invite our county health director to our next board meeting to ask some of these types of questions? Or do you feel like you and, you know, like Lenny are handling that on a daily basis with communication with them?
Um, we, we do have consistent communication, but Kirsten Johnson is our director of public health, and she's absolutely offered that to any board who would wish to have that. So if that's something that the board would like, I can reach out and schedule that. Just let me know, because she's been very willing to provide time and answer questions and help guide boards, so.
I guess my question is simple, and it's the same as Nancy's. My daughter's exposed on a Wednesday, stays home Thursday, gets tested Friday, is negative, tests again on Monday, is negative. Why can't she go back to school on Tuesday?
Right.
So that's, I mean, that's maybe the only question I have at this point, but I don't know. It could be beneficial if we, if we fire some of those questions at her in a public setting like this versus phone calls. I'm sure she gets thousands of calls a day, and I know she's working her tail off in her department, and I commend them in what they've been doing since March. But now that we're back in school, seems to, seems to be going well. But boy, would I be upset if my daughter had to stay home for 14 days even after two negative tests. So same question as Nancy, and of course that affects, you know, activities. My daughter's at dance tonight. Well, if she's not going to school today, then she doesn't get to go to dance at night sort of thing. And so she'd be devastated if, if she's literally sitting at home with two negative tests, not able to do her fun activities, so.
Well, what I can do in the interim too, for our families, I'm certain, just as you have those questions, our families have that, and that's, those are the same things we puzzle about as area superintendents with, with her. I can ask for just a public statement that we can include in this week's COVID update for all of our families around the why in that and when and how is that being examined? In addition to, like you said, a future invite. But that at least gives information sooner rather than later.
And I simply, I don't want her to come here thinking that we're going to be firing questions at her, but I think as a school district with 5,500 kids in classes now and over 1,000 staff members in and out of our buildings, I think the seven of us could come up with some, eight of us could come up with some pretty good questions for her that might be helpful to hear publicly.
Sure.
I don't mean to invite her in a negative way by any means of, of trying to catch her off guard or anything, but just, there's a lot of questions out there as far as quarantining for 14 days versus, you know, getting two negative tests and coming back, that sort of thing, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Paul?
Talking about our neighboring districts and the collaboration that's going on, how have we fared results-wise two weeks into the school year compared to our neighbors? Are we all seeing similar results or?
So we, we text each other pretty, pretty often around like, oop, had one here, this many kids out. So we're, we're in tune, but some of the neighbors have already closed down whole grade levels because they can't serve because of the intensity. So I feel like we're really holding our own right now. On that, we're certainly by, like I said, when I, when I work with others and hear that they're having to close whole chunks of school down, we, we don't have anything at that level.
So huge thank you to our families, to our teachers. Your kids are doing the right thing. You're making the right call by staying home. And yeah, you know, it's, it's together that we're going to get through and keep the buildings open. Thank you.
You may have reviewed this previously, but I know usually during normal school years, there's a certain number of absences that are allowed, whether they're for illness or not. Has there been a policy or administrative rule change about that?
So the state has new flexibility and guidelines around what, you know, truancy really means. And Tim Harder in our technology department has worked to create a new code to reflect quarantine, so we're not pushing absent letters to families where we're the ones literally asking them to stay home. And then there's also, you know, are they patching in? Are they present technically for their, their learning? What does that look like? So there's new codes so that our families don't have to be fearful. We want them to, as Paul said, just stay home. I'd rather you err on the side of caution, and if you're able to do that, that, that you do that, and we will not be penalizing you for it. We'd rather get you connected to your learning and, and go on from there, but we won't, we won't be sending you attendance letters on that one.
Other questions? All right. Anything else to the update?
No, just like I said, just continue, we'll continue to be really transparent about our data and as things shift and change, update families and continuing to communicate.
Great. Well, and I'll echo this board's appreciation for your work, your staff's work, the work of teachers, parents, and kids. I mean, it really, we've got to come together on this, and we, and we are. But thank you for your efforts. Appreciate that. All right. The next item on our agenda then is, under action items, to set our agenda resolutions and budget for our annual meeting. And Andy Sarno will be walking us through that. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Wimmer. Thank you for the opportunity tonight, as we're leading two weeks away from the annual meeting, State of the District, several, three different meetings that evening. So I'm excited to share just a little bit of information with you tonight. I have two goals. Number one, to make sure you're comfortable with the information that, that's leading into that meeting. Second goal, and I'll, I'll state this regularly, I remember we had a discussion back in June when the preliminary budget was approved. There was some discussion that evening about what do we believe the legislature might do before we set the levy in October? And some of that discussion leads into people are watching on TV. We do take minutes and whatnot, and I'd like that reflected accurately, not necessarily for our dialogue, but for some of those folks that might be reading, watching and whatnot, because the level of awareness and whatnot, where ours may be different from theirs, either higher or lower on both ends, I just want to make sure that everybody is clear. So giving the community just a little bit of information leading into that meeting two weeks from tonight. So I have, first of all, this will be the 101st annual meeting of the electors. I apologize, this does not need to be an action item. We did talk about that two weeks ago. So action is not needed tonight. In the executive summary, there was not a recommended motion. If you choose to make a, take action this evening, that, that's fine. Our district has historically done that, however, it is not required. But we have a meeting on the 28th. This is a sample agenda, and again, we've discussed this, I can think a couple times now. Six o'clock registration for the annual meeting, and essentially all that's doing is registering the folks that are in attendance. 6:30 is the public hearing of the 2020-21 budget. Mr. Zygert will, President will be calling the meeting to order, approve the agenda. I will have probably about a 22 and a half minute presentation. Almost what we're going over this evening is the second and third document. We will give the community an opportunity to share question, or ask questions and share comments, and then we would adjourn that meeting. We would wait promptly until 7 o'clock to start the annual meeting, which is what I would call more of a State of the District at that point. Pledge of allegiance, ground rules, and again, just kind of going over what those, what's expected at that meeting. We would be electing a chairperson at that. Approval, approval of the agenda. Superintendent Wimmer would be providing a State of the District. And then there are four resolutions that are brought forward at that meeting, which I have on page two. First one is resolution number one, and which is the tax levy, that's the dollar amount. This is not binding, because there's still preliminary information that we're working with until the Department of Revenue and the Department of Public Instruction releases it on October 15th. So the only thing that is binding, and I will see if I can't highlight it, I don't have a mouse up here, is the $1.1 million applied to the capital project funds, and I'll talk about that a little bit more when I'm going over the budget publication. That's the only binding levy. Everything else in this, in this resolution is advisory by those in attendance that vote that evening. Okay? Any questions on that? Because those numbers will change, that's why. Resolution number two, disposal of district property. Essentially, there's dollar amounts that are determined where Superintendent Wimmer and myself are granted authority to dispose of assets in a proper way. Anything above and beyond that is brought for your approval to do so. Again, binding. Board member compensation. I created just a little bit of history here with where it's currently at, where it has been the last time that it changed, quite a few years ago. But I did populate that with dollar amounts per your request at the last board meeting. Additionally, what this resolution does is it elects, it allows board members to travel and conduct school business, being able to incur expenses and whatnot. Fourth resolution is talking about the annual meeting date for next year, which is 21, 2021 dash 2022. And proposed, even though we have a very wide window to perform this meeting, I, at this point in time, I would propose to keep it at the same Monday, which would be September 27th of 2021. Any questions on this document at all with the resolutions?
Just a very quick question regarding resolution number two. I have no problem with it, the estimated amount, $5,000. That's, seems a little low. I might ask if that's handicapping the district in, in any way. Actually, I really, as a board member, I'm trying to remember the last time we had to approve it, so that, I guess my point is, I just want to be sure that we're not holding up the district in any way on disposing of property, because you have to wait for, for a board meeting. Is that dollar amount workable to administration?
It is. That dollar amount also corresponds with what a capital asset would be deemed as to the federal government, so that, that there's a little bit of a linkage there. But also remember that quite often, short of the sale of a building or some land, we use our equipment pretty thoroughly. So that, and again, you might have a vehicle, $25,000 purchase, you use it for seven years, even though the value is there, it's been fully depreciated, because that's under the depreciation schedule we utilize with our auditors. And so even though the value, it, very, very rarely would we ever have an opportunity like that, so.
Thank you.
In fact, I think if you kind of think back to meetings, I, I don't think there's been anything that's in recent history, but thank you, thank you for asking. That's a great question. Any other questions on the resolutions, as well as the agenda for those two meetings that evening? I'm going to save the revenue limit worksheet for last, and I'll take a look at that. So that's that color handout that you have. I do like the tabloid, the 11 by 17. It allows us the opportunity to see things just a little bit bigger. So we've got it on the screen. I hope folks can read it. Again, it was posted in our packets and whatnot. The left-hand side of this document is what's published in our newspaper. It's a class two notice. It has to be at least 10 days in advance, and then again, within 10 days. So that's already been coordinated and whatnot with, with our newspaper. What this document additionally does, and going back to my original comments, are, well, our budget is going up. Why? This gives all of us some common talking points that if, again, Ms. Justman gets stopped at the grocery store by a constituent, she has the ability to say, yes, our budget is going up, and here's why. Because we're a low-spending district, there's a biennial budget that allowed for us to be, the whole floor to be picked up by $300 last year and this year, and that's why the budget's going up, even though we do have some declining enrollment. So there's some talking points here. I apologize, and please let me know if you'd like me to read them. I did make just some comments, if you'd like to go over them. But essentially what we have is with our general fund, we have a balanced budget. Our fund balance is sitting at just under $16 million, but what's proposed in this year's budget that we're in right now, this is a little bit weird for people to remember, we've already started our fiscal year. We're, we're two and a half months in. By the time you set the final budget and the levy, we're going to be four months in. But that, that's a little bit of a different concept for those in the public sector, private sector, excuse me, but that, that's how schools in Wisconsin are authorized to operate. But balanced budget, I've captured everything here, everything, what I believe, from what we know and can anticipate within reason. COVID costs, the virtual schooling that we've discussed, and even that's in a little bit of transition. We've captured just about everything on the instructional, the support, and then what we call kind of that outside the instruction, which is some of those open enrollment, like I said, the virtual gets quoted in that. We've captured all those revenues and expenditures that we were anticipating right now. It's within the general fund. I can come down a little bit further into that next section, special education projects, which is where the head start, county seat. We operate our special education out of our special projects funds, and then we have some special education out of our special projects funds, and then we have some student monies that are there, which all of that fund balance is actually student dollars that they fundraised that's been donated for those operations for students by students. But again, we've captured just about everything that's possible within this area. Debt service, the next section down, these are referendum and non-referendum. So what the board entered into without allowable, without constituent authority, we have debt issuance, ability to do that. Additionally, the referendum dollars that the community voted on and approved in past years. What I've also done here is that fund balance, and it's important to note this, is that that represents the majority of it, the defeasance that's been done over the last several years, and even included in this proposed budget is two and a quarter million dollars. That could be adjusted. We still have the ability to adjust that prior to October 26, but there's another two and a quarter million dollars, all the while, still keeping that tax rate or our mill rate flat. So I'll talk about that down at the bottom, but I just wanted to disclose that. So we still have two and a quarter million dollars of defused money. But we are approaching $10 million of defused money to be used for, in some way, to completely, to pay off that referendum debt, but that is there for some future use. Capital Projects Fund, trust funds, this is where I wanted to point out, we made some adjustments as we completed our audit, and that is just about nearing completion, but we ended up transferring more money into these two trusts between Fund 41 and Fund 46. They do operate just a little bit differently in how that impacts our state aid in the following year, but we were able to utilize that just a little bit, which is why our fund balance is increased last year, and potentially, and again, this will be finalized by October 26, I'm proposing here to use a little bit of it this year. That gives us that flexibility back, but in the general fund. So we put more money than was anticipated last year. We're utilizing some of that, but the net is that there's still an increase in fund balance between the two years. So it ended up being a smart approach to be able to utilize this to keep our state aid where it needs to be. We didn't jeopardize anything. I think it was a solid approach to protect ourselves financially. Nutrition Services Fund, one of the big things I'd like to point out here, where they do have a little bit of a surplus planned right now, that's primarily because every student between September 1st and December 31st of this year, so the rest of the calendar year, every student district-wide has access to a free breakfast and a free lunch. That's subject to if that pot of money at the federal government is completely used up before then, which is possible. We don't know when that's going to happen, but right now, they're saying December 31st. So the reimbursement that we're receiving is actually financially advantageous for the ABPDA's fund. Other Post-Employment Benefit Trust Fund, several years ago, the district took action where we had an old method of determining those benefits. We've slid over to a new contractual obligation where those were changed and minimized, so the exposure to risk, because we have the ability to control that dollar amount, as opposed to having it previously tied to health insurance costs. We're now entering into an era where we still have a few people on the old plan, and we could start incurring expenditures under the new method. So again, as we wrapped up last fiscal year, some additional monies were able to be transferred into this fund to protect ourselves and to address that liability that exists. So we're in a good place right now, and we'll continue to make sure that we monitor this. It will be dependent on who retires and when. We can estimate who that might be and when that might be, but we are being fiscally proactive in identifying some monies to be set aside for that. Community Service Fund, this is our Fund 80, and this is everything what I call outside of a typical school day. So our school resource officers are allowed to be in there. We have middle school sports, and then some other student programming that's either before or after school, and all of that's captured in there. You'll notice that the fund balance is declining. That was done purposefully over the course of a three-year spend down to offset that expenditure where we started coding our school resource officers to this fund. Last little chunk that we have is we're the fiscal agent for a hockey cooperative among several other districts, so all of that has to be captured here. We transfer money in, and we receive money from the other districts in there, so that's the revenue and the expenditures. We're anticipating about $80,000 of activity for that sport. So all in all, when I think about what's happened with our expenditures over the last three years, is that we've seen a slight increase again, because we were a low-spending district. We were allowed access to some new monies that outpaced even though we have declining enrollment. Then access to the new monies has grown our budget just a little bit over the course of the last couple of years, kind of in a straight trajectory. And even though, because we've had property value increases during that same time, where our property tax levy or the dollar amount has increased, because we're seen as a property-rich district, we get less state aid, those property taxes do have to increase. But that being said, the tax rate, the $7.97 per thousand dollars of assessed value, has remained constant now for three years. So I'm anticipating that that is still possible. Highly probable even. And if something were to change yet, I think we still have a little bit of flexibility. If you recall, last year in October, we made some adjustments to the voucher money. So we have a levy for that where we decreased what we were planning on defusing. So we were able to still hit some targets and still be responsive to our taxpayers.
Question, Andy. At the annual meeting, or if you could quick comment on it now, the mill rate, two items, the mill rate compared to the state average and to our neighboring Washington County, and then the fund balance as compared to the overall budget as a whole?
Yep. So our mill rate or the taxation rate, which is the $7.97 that every property owner pays per $1,000 of assessed value, we are one of the lowest in the area. There may be one district, I'm not recalling off the top of my head, I think maybe Slinger. There's another district that's close to us, but we are very, very low in comparison now. Again, we're a property-rich district. We don't get a lot of state aid. The state average is about 63%, or more of a 50/50, but low taxation rate, even when compared not just to our neighboring area, but across the state. The state average is above $10 per thousand dollars of assessed value. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, so the state average is around 10. So we're roughly even 20% even lower than the state average, and.
Yep. And there's several contributing factors to that. Again, our population density, so we have a lot of property value, a big, fairly large geographic area, but our population density, we just don't have that like some other areas. The, I was going to say a second point, I apologize. I'll think about it in a minute.
I co-mingled the questions. Just the fund balance, I think you had touched on this last year. We need to maintain a certain percentage of a fund balance, that $15 million you roughly started out. Can you comment on that?
Correct. Our fund balance, we do meet our board policy currently, so the $15 million is at that amount. Now, the thing is, is even though there's a fund balance, some of it is designated, it's reserved for special activities. A perfect example that I think we're all aware of is the Jackson Trust. There's money that's set aside for some point when we do something at Jackson Elementary, that amount could be used. It can't be utilized for cash flow, well, it can't be used for cash flow. It can't be spent on textbooks or staffing expenses. It's designated for that. We're a self-funded health insurance. There's a fair amount of money that's, again, set aside as a contingency in the case we have a bad year where the claims exceed the money that's been collected. So where we do have an adequate fund balance, when you pull out those reserved accounts, we are a little bit on the low side, but as a whole, we're currently meeting our board policy. And I will talk a little bit more in detail about that at the annual meeting.
And just to give a plug with that, anyone that has questions, Andy is the expert, and he puts things in layman's terms that the average community member can understand, so I thank you for that.
I hope so.
Andy, two questions. This is, I think this is my second year going through the budgeting process, so I'll come back and ask the same question I did last year. On debt service, what is our current outstanding balance on the in-place referendums?
I wish I had that information with me at this point in time. I could get close, and I can go off, and we're approximately $25 million. We did make, I think, based on the last time we discussed this, which would have been spring, we made payments, principal and interest in the spring, interest only in the fall. So we just made some interest payments, but we're approximately, principal only, about $25 million. It's comprised of several, we have several referendum and non-referendum debt issues, ranging from about 0% interest up to a couple percent, but very low, low debt ratio that we have. So our outstanding principal, based on our current value, is very low. Again, probably one of the lowest in the state.
So if we take that 25 mil, and we look at the beginning fund balance for debt service, we've got about a third of it saved up, and with the projected deposits going in this next year, we will, and the payments going against that, the normal payments, we ought to be getting close to 40-plus percent. So for the community to understand, the notes are not callable, meaning they can't be paid off early, but we are going to have upwards of 40% saved up to pay that. So effectively, we're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood. Right now, at 25, with the 8.6, I'm doing math without a net here, but we'd be somewhere around, you know, $17 million, true outstanding.
So there are expenditures that correspond with that revenue, so I wouldn't go from 25 up to 40%. It'd be 25%, plus that two and a quarter proposed.
Okay.
So we'd be adding, we'd be going from the 8 million up to about 10 million of defused money, so not quite that.
Okay. But we still will be making another dent against that, which is great. And then the other question I had was on the capital projects, so the roughly $2 million. Just for frame of reference, this was about a million and a half last school year, correct?
Correct. So what we ended up doing is all those expenditures last year that we incurred, and there's about a million and a half dollars that Mr. Ross and his team spent on updating our facilities, we actually moved all of that money back into the general fund, allowing that fund balance to grow. And we transferred money, so that's Fund 41. Again, there's two different, excuse me, two different sets of rules between Fund 41 and Fund 46. There's two funds that comprise that. But we moved all of those expenditures out of Fund 41, allowing that fund balance to grow. And in addition to that, Fund 46, which we've not transferred money into for several years, we utilized that, added money, and that's where you can see anything in excess of the total, the total, the total revenues last year was 3.4 million, so we transferred in the 1.5, plus we transferred in almost another 2 million into Fund 46. And so that, there was a substantial growth in fund balance to be used at some future point in time, which we'll be capitalizing on that a little bit this year and some point in the future. So the net result of that transfer from last year will allow us to improve our facilities just that much more.
Thank you for your creativity on that, and given Dave Ross a little more budget to work with.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Chris?
No. I was going to ask that very same thing. Any other questions for Andy with regard to anything presented?
Just real quickly, I've got the third document. Again, this is fairly small on the screen. I did print out a copy. The district at this point in time, and again, this is preliminary, just as an example, on the left-hand side of the page, kind of down towards the bottom, it's 46 summer school students FTE this year, down significantly. However, we did have less expenditures, and so that program's still net positive just a little bit. But as an example, that 6,100, which is an estimate at this point in time, the third Friday count was just this last Friday, and over the next two weeks, they're going to start working on that information. And that's when it will be due at the DPI, Department of Public Instruction. And so by October 15th, we'll have that. All that information will be locked down, we'll have that, but that's an estimate at this point in time, based on the students that we're able to count, both in our schools, in our virtual program. We're estimating open enrollment in and open enrollment out at this point in time, but that's just an estimate. Down in the bottom blue is our property values, and again, this is really what drives our state aid. And this is an estimate from Baird, so we were provided an estimate from RW Baird, Brian Brewer, and that's a 6.1% estimated increase. Again, that will be confirmed by the Department of Revenue on October 15th. But estimate at this point in time, I think it's a pretty precise number. They're usually good at estimating that. Point being is that everything that's in blue is what the district has entered. What I've entered is estimates based on information that we have access to right now. So on the voucher payments, they're right in the middle of the page in blue. Let me kind of highlight them just a little bit. But they're in blue here, 1.96 million and $270,000. Those are estimates. If you recall, last year, that almost doubled annoyingly, but I've allowed for a 20% increase. There are no new schools in our district that are allowing the vouchers, but I still have allowed for an increase of 20%. Some of these other numbers, again, based on our state aid estimate of a little over 30 million, 30.4 million, which impacts our taxes, which is this 36 million. All of these numbers down here in that bottom right, those are all those numbers that are in that resolution number one. So how I like to describe this document is it brings it all together. That's what we utilize for our revenues and all of those resolutions and whatnot. Everything's kind of telling a full story now. And then down in that bottom right is that $7.97, which is the proposed mill rate. But I just wanted to share this because it's important to see, and it just kind of gives a little bit more kind of validity to some of those other numbers and where those came from.
And maybe one comment, Andy, on that school voucher, if I'm remembering right from a prior presentation. So that's at 1.9 million, your, if I'm remembering right last year, it went up by about 900,000. So that's 900,000 that went to our, even our wonderful private school systems here in Washington County. Many schools take advantage of it, which is, which is, which is good. I just want to say, that is a significant, not knowing the exact, but that's, as spending is going up for the district, it's really not spending for the district. That is a significant, when you're talking $1 million increase in one year, it's a significant increase to what the budget is. So it's more or less just a comment on that. And then a question is, are we about at the limit there, or could it go up by another $1 million this year?
The threshold, Superintendent Wimmer, back me up if you can confirm, but I believe the threshold is 10%. Is it up to 10% yet? I think they started out 3% of the population, and it increased by 1% each year over the last five years, so maybe it's at about 8%, 9% of the population. So I don't want to do the math, but if you take 6,300 kids divided by 10, multiplied by 7, multiplied by another approximately $9,000, I think there's still capacity there if we have students that qualify. And again, the income, the household income limit for this is totally different than what the free introduced rates are. It's nearly double. So a household of five, so two adults, three children, children, making $90,000 is very close to qualifying for this. Again, this is another one of those October 15th informations. So they're doing their third Friday count at the private schools. We get that information on October 15, and it's there. We don't get an indication before then if the numbers are up or down or whatnot, so. Yeah, but as you pointed out, it is significant. A couple million dollars is a fair amount of money. A couple million dollars is a fair amount of money.
Thanks. Other questions?
Take me through the annual meeting of school boards in Wisconsin. We've, in my time on the board, we've typically had these four resolutions. Is that normal across Wisconsin, or are there other districts who have 10 resolutions at their board meetings? And I do have a reason for asking this question, but that's, I guess I'll stop there for now.
So when I compare my last couple of districts, those are the same four resolutions. The wording could be tweaked slightly and whatnot, and I've not made any changes. This is the wording, the numbers are, but yeah, these are very similar, and I don't know, Superintendent Wimmer?
There's usually a standard set that you're going for. They're very similar. I know that the, all the area business directors work together, look at these pieces, look at process, and kind of reevaluate that annually in case there's any recommendations for changes, but it's very standard.
I guess, and I'll tell you the reason I asked that question, and Mr. President, with the annual meeting in two weeks, I would prefer that we do take action to show the community that these are the four resolutions that we plan to bring to the community in two weeks. Just in case there's a 500 community members who come and want to have a resolution number five, six, and seven, or whatever, I just, I think it goes kind of a longer way, just to show that we discussed these four tonight and took action to bring them to the community.
That's great. Any additional discussion on that? Questions, concerns?
I can make a motion.
Please do.
I move to approve sending resolution number one, the tax levy. Resolution number two, disposal of district property. Resolution number three, board member compensation. And resolution number four, the 2021, 2022 annual meeting date to the annual meeting of the electors, which will be held on September 28, 2020.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the four resolutions as presented, for presentation to the annual meeting of the electors on September 28, 2020. Hopefully, I did a decent enough job reflecting that.
I do recognize that the community who comes on that night has the opportunity to discuss these, to potentially offer some different ideas or different numbers, what have you. But I, like I said, that's my reasoning for wanting to make a motion here tonight to bring them, these four officially to the meeting, so.
Great. All right, any final discussion?
I just have a comment on resolution three, just for public information. It's on board compensation. As Superintendent Wimmer says, we're very, trying to be very fiscally responsible with every dollar we get spending-wise. For board compensation, if I'm recalling my numbers, the city board council or city council members have annual compensation about twice that of the school board, and the county board is almost two and a half times more, last time I checked. It could be off. So again, with keeping it the same, I'm in favor of keeping it the same and being good stewards of your money, and then just wanted to comment on.
I would like to thank Kurt for pointing that out, because I think that's a critical piece for people to understand that, you know, not just are we financially conservative with the budget, but also with our own payment. And I would venture to say that we put in as many hours, if not more, than city alderpeople and county representatives as well. So thank you for pointing that out.
Great. Thank you for the comments. Any final discussion? In favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. Andy, thank you for your presentation and for your work. We appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is a discussion regarding the proposed 2021 employee health and dental insurance premiums. And Mr. Lenny Hansen will take that point. Take it away, Lenny.
Members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. Last year, I did a pretty deep dig around this time of year into what all of our benefits are. We had a lot of newer board members and had never had that opportunity to kind of understand the full plethora of pieces that factor into our especially health benefit package. This year, I won't go quite as deep into those details, but I still want to cover all of the big picture pieces that factor into especially our health insurance costs and premium as a check-in this year, and then we'll be ready for questions throughout and after. So this is kind of the order we're going to go in today. First is dental insurance, which is a pretty short discussion. After that, then, we have kind of an overview around health insurance, and then we'll talk about a few of the key pieces that factor into that. And then we'll close by talking about some of the ways that we are trying to curb potential expenses on health costs. So first piece, we are looking at our dental and health insurance renewals for 2021. So our benefit year starts January 1st and runs through the calendar year. So the pieces that we're looking at are reflecting on the previous year's experience on our benefit costs, and then looking to project what we think they will be for 2021 and what employee premiums would be as a part of that equation. So for dental insurance, we're staying with the same carrier, which is Delta Dental, which we've had for a number of years. While dental insurance often gets overlooked, it's not, it's not a drop in the bucket. It's a nearly million-dollar expense for us as a district. We're performing very well in 2020, which is a repeat of 2019. And honestly, we were, we were performing well even prior to the pandemic. As you may know, the pandemic has put a lot of holds on dental care for individuals, especially for the first couple of months when dental offices were completely shut down. But we do see that starting to catch up now as we get our monthly updates as what our usage and claims are. But certainly, the pandemic has impacted dental costs even more than health costs. So we're performing well once again. We're expecting that, you know, the rates are going to, or costs are going to remain flat for 2021. And for that reason, our proposal is to maintain dental insurance employee premiums at their current rate, which I'll show on the next slide. The one graph that I have here is just information of one of the big things we're working on in order to maybe drive down our dental costs a little bit. And then we've been successful in this so far, and that's really driving our employees to our network PPO. So there are a few different, there are three different options that our employees have when selecting a dental provider. There's those that fall within our PPO group, those that fall within the premier group, and those that fall out of network. So we have coverage for providers in the premier and PPO network, but the PPO network is a lower cost to us, and our negotiated rates with our PPO providers is lower. So 74% of our dental care is received through PPO providers, which is good, and that's an increase over previous years. We are continuing to try and provide education to employees about what their options are so that they understand you can go to premier, but you will save money going to a PPO. We've also, in the past year, reached out to a couple of our bigger providers that fall within that premier category. And some of them have actually switched upon speaking with us to a PPO, becoming a PPO provider, which is beneficial for them because it makes coverage more, care from them more attractive for our employees, and it obviously benefits us because then the negotiated rates are lower. So we're going to continue. There's one big provider left in the area that is still in premier. We've had conversations with, and we're going to continue to work with them because we think it's a mutual benefit to the more that we can move them over. So these are the existing dental premiums that we would be keeping flat. They were increased a little bit recently, but we'd be keeping them flat for the next 12 months. Next, we move on to health insurance, which is obviously the largest benefit cost that we have, projected to be about 11 and a half million-dollar expense for 2021. I have the cost breakdown there between our two providers, between health, health coverage and then pharmacy coverage. Health coverage is a larger share of that for this coming year, and that's for a good reason, and that's that we are definitely experiencing savings from the shift to a different pharmaceutical provider, which started this past January. If you recall, at that time, we switched from Express Scripts over to OptumRx. We are, we had a conservative estimate at that time that it would save us $300,000 over the course of a year, and we are definitely going to exceed that target. It's difficult to say exactly by how much yet, because a lot of our savings there is experienced through rebates that the pharmaceutical, or actually, the drug makers pay us, and those are lagging by at least six months usually, so we're still receiving that data. But we are definitely going to exceed that savings by a, of 300,000. We're going to exceed that definitely by a six-figure amount. So we're very happy about that performance and that that's turning out even better than we had originally planned. So that actually lowers the share of our health costs that are going to be covered by a percentage that are attributed to pharmacy. The other piece, you heard Mr. Sarno talk about us being a self-funded organization. And what that basically means is that truly, we pay all of the claims. There's, there's two sides that you can go on. You can be a fully funded organization or a self-funded organization. Fully funded is certainly simpler. Basically, you go out to a healthcare provider, which could be a UMR or United, and you say, all right, we want you to provide health insurance for our business. UMR looks at our previous claim history and says, all right, it's going to cost you $10 million. And then we sit there and say, all right, employee's going to pay this percent, we're going to pay this percent, we're done. And there's no unpredictability for the district on that end when you are a fully insured organization. We are not fully insured because we have significant benefits from being self-insured instead. So what that means is when, when I go to the doctor and my doctor bills our insurance for $200, West Bend School District truly writes a check for $200. By being, by being an organization large enough to be self-funded, we experience pretty significant cost savings. I know I was talking to a similarly sized district not long ago who is moving from fully funded to self-funded, and they're expected to incur nearly a million dollars in savings by being self-funded. So it's not a small savings by, by operating in that manner. That being said, it does, as Mr. Sarno spoke about, create a little more volatility in your ability to predict. Your expenses isn't as perfect as being fully funded, which is why we keep those reserves in our fund balance to deal with any surprises that could be incurred because of that. I'll also talk about in a little bit some of the other safeguards in place to make sure that as a self-funded organization, you don't, you avoid being crushed by any huge surprises. The other piece about being self-insured, the other benefit, is you do have more flexibility in plan design and how you set premiums and divide them up for share, for cost share, and that can create some flexibility for us as well. This is just an interesting stat. We are seeing a shift in the generations that are falling under our health plan. I guess on this graph, what's interesting for me is when I look at up here, the percentage of, of each group that is our members, which is highlighted here, and then that bottom number under it is the percent that that group accounts for in terms of claims. So as you'd expect, as members on the plan grow older, they account for a larger share of the expenses. But what is also interesting is that the number falling within this Generation X group is growing for us. We've had more of a Generation Y type, or this age range, I should say. And we are starting to have that population age a little bit more, and that share is shifting, which, which as you can see here, means that, you know, they can potentially be larger claims costing and whatnot. So it's something, it's interesting for us to watch those trends. The only other trend, a big one that I have here about pharmacy to share with you is, you know, I know last year I shared some information about the true cost of prescriptions, which I think most people are surprised when they hear that information. I mean, when we talked last year, I think I focused on some, on specialty drugs as part of the presentation, and, you know, everyone was amazed to learn that the average cost of one prescription fill of a specialty drug is $8,000. And, you know, we have a tiered payment system from the employee side, like most organizations in terms of, you know, a $10 for a generic, and, you know, 25 for brand, and then, you know, 45 for specialty, which is pretty common. But when you put that $45 in context of that, that prescription cost $8,000, it really opens your eyes to how incredibly volatile that pharmaceutical market is. What's interesting about this graph for me, and I'll just look at this left side, it looks at this here. The, the left portion here, the purple, those are generic claims, so number of prescriptions. So 80% of our prescriptions are generic, are generic prescriptions. Yet they account for only 14% of the money that goes out in prescriptions. When you look at that skinny blue section over here, that, we have a very small number, only 2.3% of all of our prescription claims are actually for specialty drugs, but they account for more than half of what we pay in pharmacy costs, which I think is very eye-opening. And honestly, the, you know, it's wonderful that we live in the country and world that we do, where there are so many new pharmaceutical options. But those new pharmaceutical options have incredible cost. The newest piece out there, we haven't experienced this before, but there, there's a record-breaking gene therapy that is truly life-saving for children with a certain musculoskeletal disorder. You get one fill of it, and you're cured, and you'll live. If you don't get it, you won't live. But that one fill costs 2.1 million dollars. So as science reveals new opportunities, which is wonderful, it also creates situations where we have to really take a step back and analyze how we fund our healthcare coverage to account for that. One of the other big pieces that factors into our healthcare coverage is stop-loss insurance, and this is that safeguard that I talked about a few moments ago. So stop-loss coverage is another insurance that we buy that backs us up when we have individuals have extremely high-cost claims. So when we have someone who has a real horrific type of illness, such as a cancer or something like that, when their total claims for the year hit $250,000, we've paid all $250,000 of those dollars as a self-funded organization. But at $250,000 and beyond, stop-loss insurance pays the rest. So that is our safeguard against those truly horrific catastrophic diseases that are so costly, and that's what prevents us from having too much volatility in our claims cost. So this is being renewed. We've had a few years in a row where, very unfortunately, not for the money-wise, but for the health-wise of our employees, we've had a number of employees have some very significant conditions, and thank goodness, we've had excellent healthcare to support them through that. But just like all insurance, the claims experience is what drives your future costs. So since we've had a few years of higher numbers of high-cost claimants, the cost of stop-loss insurance has gone up. We will pay about $540,000 this year for stop-loss insurance, which provides us that safeguard. This is a overview to kind of give you an idea of what those high-cost claimants look like and what an impact they make on our, on our insurance costs. So each one of these lines is one person, okay? So we have one person here who incurred $1.2 million in costs. Stop-loss insurance saved us from roughly a million dollars in costs there. When you look over here, I mean, we're seeing, so current average total claims per highest-cost claimant. So a high-cost claimant is counted as over $50,000. Well, of all those high-cost claimants, I mean, in average, they're having $150,000 in expenses. It's not small expenses, and, you know, that's the point of having health insurance, right? So this is, this is what comes with the territory, but it is important to recognize that high-cost claimants, both on that pharmacy side that I showed you with specialty drugs, as well as here on some of these huge conditions, they drive a lot of our cost, which is what insurance is for. But when we have increases, a lot of times, it is due to high-cost claimants. Positive news, you know, we really want, we have our workplace clinic, and that was another decision that was brought to you about a year ago to change, maybe a little less than a year, to change vendors on our, or we began discussing that, and then we brought it to you, I think in April, when we finally selected a vendor for our workforce clinic. clinic. The workforce clinic is now provided at the Freiter West Bend Health Center on Paradise Drive, across the street from Walmart. We've been having very positive experiences there, both in terms of employee health experience and in terms of cost. We are definitely saving a substantial amount of money, a six-figure amount, as we predicted earlier.
Lenny, I'm sorry, I need to go back a page. Does our stop-loss coverage have a cap per, per patient?
So, yeah, so it's, per pa, per patient, two hundred fifty thousand is the most we would pay for a single individual's care. Is that, is that the question?
No, because at that point, the stop-loss coverage kicks in, is that correct? So does the stop-loss coverage, does that go to infinity, or do they max out at a certain amount?
It does not max out.
Okay.
So stop-loss is a very volatile market because of that, you know, when I, and pharmaceutical is included in stop-loss insurance. So if we were to have someone that had that catastrophic musculoskeletal disorder that I talked about earlier, stop-loss would pay the entire difference between two hundred fifty thousand and the two point one million. But as, you know, stop-loss rates have gone up quite a bit in the last few years, as some of those therapies, especially gene therapy is really the blossoming area where there's some really amazing things going on, but happen at very high costs. So stop-loss insurance costs have really gone up in the last few years because of those things.
Thank you.
So what this graph shows you is the number of urgent care and emergency care visits per one thousand that we incur compared to a norm group, okay? And as you see, we are way, way below. We have far fewer urgent care visits and far fewer emergency room visits than a, a normal business that has health insurance experiences. That is because of our clinic, okay? I mean, I, I think that is, that is, and this is an even better, this is an even better experience than our insurance broker sees with other districts that have clinics. So I think we've done a really good job over many years of encouraging employees to use the clinic and making it accessible. But what this means is that, you know, they go to the clinic, then it costs nothing to the employee. At the same time, ha, our average ER visit, the office visit alone is about thirteen hundred seventy dollars. So each visit that we get at the, to the clinic instead of an emergency room is a savings of thirteen hundred seventy dollars. Well, when you add up, when you compare us versus the norm group, if these bars were right down the middle, it would cost us about another three hundred ten thousand dollars a year. So the clinic is deferring, you know, you can assume about that number. That's, that's pretty close to the actual full cost of the clinic over the course of the year under our new provider, meaning in just urgent care and emergency care deferment, we're almost paying for the clinic alone, aside from when you add in all the other benefits of having a workplace clinic. So this is really positive for us and only speaks to the importance of maintaining a strong clinic. In terms of general healthcare costs, we are projecting close to a six percent increase in costs, and that comes from our broker really looking at healthcare in southeast Wisconsin in general, okay? So that's the number, it's not unique to West Bend School District, it's really the projected increase in costs, right? Five point eight percent actually is small compared to a lot of years what you've seen in the healthcare industry. Unfortunately, healthcare costs have not, their, their, their increasing has not slowed, as we all know. On top of that, being a self-funded organization, we're taking more of an estimate each year as to what the cost share will be between the employer, the school district, and the employee. In a fully funded situation, like I explained earlier, it's easy to determine. We know that the healthcare, the health insurance company will bill us X. We know it will be no more, no less, and we can easily just set a percentage. Being self-funded, we have to make a prediction about where we think those costs will be. On top of that, you also have other pieces that the district funds, such as our health reimbursement accounts, and those pieces factor into our cost share as well. That means that each year, we, we come close, but not always perfect in terms of estimating, "All right, we wanted it to be about this much for the employer, this much for the employee." It's not always perfect, and that means the next year, we have to make a little bit of an adjustment in order to keep the cost share where we'd really like it to be. Mr. Sarno and I have spent a lot of time looking at historically where that cost share has been as a district, and what we have noticed is, you know, prior to he and I, there, there was starting to be a little bit of a tilt of a little bit more towards the employer's side to the point that we are now. We do feel that it is important to tilt it back to where it has historically been in terms of employer-employee share, because if we don't do that, it will continue to creep in the other direction, and all of a sudden, we'll hit a point where we have to do a very sudden change, and that's, you know, far more painful than, than a smaller increase at one point in the year. Therefore, we're proposing some increases to the employee health premiums to account for both of these first two bullet points, both the six percent or five point eight percent projected increase, as well as trying to get that cost share back to where the, the school board has traditionally, going back, preferred it to be. So this is a summary table of the changes that would take place. We have three different health plans, Plan One, Two, and Three. These are the, the wellness rates. So these are the rates that you receive if you participate in our wellness program. And our wellness program involves a biometric screening, which we had a, a large event for that during the months of July and August. And then based on that biometric screening, you might complete some visits with, virtual visits with a health coach, where they help you set some health goals and things like that throughout the year. Wellness rates are also impacted as, depending on whether the employee and spouse are tobacco users or not. So there are discounts as well because of that. The, the most, you can see here, I kept the number in rolled in each plan here in this second column, and the point of that is to show you which plans are the most popular. The Plan Two, Family Plan, is definitely our most popular plan. A hundred and eighty-two different plans or members on it is looking at twenty-six dollars per month employee premium increase. We take out employee premium deductions twice a month, so it's a thirteen dollars per paycheck deduction for those employees. What I'm doing today is presenting you with these premium proposals. We then will return on October fifth, where we'll have the opportunity then to actually vote on them. So tonight is really just discussion opportunity to, to, to gather initial information. Now, different things that we do to try and curb those healthcare costs, I already talked about the, the clinic, but what we do is we really work with the clinic as well as the health coaches to target areas that we think are ready and really primed for improvement. So we look at areas where our health data comes back that we have some care gaps, or maybe we have some at-risk groups that are, you know, have certain preventative measures that we aren't, that they aren't taking advantage of as, as often as we'd like. We don't get that data by name or anything like that. We look at it kind of in an aggregate manner so that it's confidential. But we might, for example, see that, an example, a good example would be individuals on our plan who have diabetes, maybe not filling certain prescriptions or having certain tests. Retina exam, classic example, retina exam for individuals with diabetes is an annual exam you want to have, it's preventative, it saves you costs in the future from, by catching things early. We are a little bit higher in terms of the number of people who aren't having those, yet they have diabetes. So what we do is we work with the clinic as well as the health coach and say, "Listen, if you have someone that comes in with diabetes, could you work with them and make sure that they understand all the preventive measures that they, you know, that they should be taking in order to maintain their health?" Same thing with asthma, there's certain prescription fills and things like that, certain preventative things that we'll, we'll target based on our data, and then we have those conversations. In fact, I had one just last week with our district's health coach that we'll be using and provided by Freiter about, "Hey, you know, diabetes, asthma, these pieces, we'd really like you to focus on with employees to make sure we close that care gap." The, we do have some metrics that measure our employee wellness, they get like a risk score basically assigned over the course of the year. Again, this is all confidential, the district never sees any names associated with this, it's provided in kind of an aggregate and anonymous manner with us, so that that's a private employee and medical provider information. But the, the good news is that our risk score has gone down slightly this year, which is good. Our behavioral health visits among, which was a, a larger cost this past year, or a year ago, has gone down some, which is obviously positive for lots of reasons, that individuals are getting the, the support and behavioral health that they need. But that's one area, for example, that we want to keep driving that down, and we're looking at a variety of things, including potentially beefing up our employee assistant program to help individuals with those things. Because again, like most things in medical care, being preventative is your best way to save money. Getting near the end here, but really, this, this slide really highlights the reason that we go after these, these wellness opportunities and try to be proactive about it. This is a wheel, it's basically supposed to look at, from starting in this green is where we want people to be. We want people to be in the well-being, in well-being programs. As they potentially have more health issues, they, they move in a counterclockwise manner into the light yellow, then to the orangish, and then into the pink, unfortunately. We want to minimize how many people are in our pink and especially dark oranges we can groups, and we're doing a pretty effective job of doing that. If you look at this graph, ninety-three percent of our staff is in that well-being range. That means, this is a, the PMPY means per member per year, so really, that's annual cost. If you're in that green group, your healthcare costs are only about seventeen hundred dollars a year. Great. You can see as that number goes around, this is kind of a weird year where disease management is less than disease monitoring, usually that's not the case, but we got to keep people out of the case management situation. As you can see, the cost just explodes to about a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars per person at that, at that point. That's why we want to really work with our clinic and health coach about, "Hey, how do we keep people, you know, there's, there's certain people, you know, diabetes, asthma, certain things, you can't do anything about it, it's a condition that you're going to live with." But how can we people, keep our employees in a disease management and monitoring scenario by being preventative versus it spinning out of control and all of a sudden, they end up in case management and it ends up being a huge cost? This is just more data about some of those chronic conditions, some that we do well with, some that were above the norms, that's just giving you another idea on this top right of the difference in costs. You know, if all members are costing around this number, fifty-eight hundred, someone with one of these conditions is costing twenty-three thousand. It's why it's so crucial that we use this data and don't just receive it and do nothing with it. Same thing here with our kind of acute care pieces. You see almost four times the cost when we're not appropriately addressing those, these issues in a preventative way. In summary, these are the next steps. We have our discussion tonight. October fifth is really when we need to approve our premiums, because in November, we have open enrollments, we have to prepare for that, and our employees make their benefit selections, and then January first is when benefits, the benefit year begins. That sums up my presentation for tonight. What we'll be doing from, from after tonight is we'll be sharing information based on your feedback as well with the staff about the direction we're looking, giving them the opportunity to reach out as well with questions and things like that, and then becoming on October fifth with a final proposal. Questions?
Question for you, Lenny. Projected healthcare increase of five point eight percent, obviously premiums go up a little bit with, with that, but does the percentage that we, as a district, anticipate covering versus the employee covering stay the same?
No, so we will be shifting that, and that's what I was trying to get at with that second bullet point here. We've gotten out of whack with where it has traditionally been about three years ago. We, Mr. Sarno and I have done a deep analysis and seen that where that share has been has come out of balance. We think it's important to get back to where that share was, again, to avoid kind of the, the sudden shifts of, "Oh, my goodness, we suddenly need to have a, a..."
To really raise, right.
Huge increase. A few years ago, prior to Mr. Sarno, myself, or the superintendent being here, there was a sudden panic moment around, I think, October, November, and they had to suddenly make changes in the benefits, I think after open enrollment had actually even begun. Not a good thing. We've got lots of negative feedback, some of you may have been on the board during that time. We do not want to be in a situation like that where we have to make sudden changes that really, you know, and at that point, I would say there were some really sudden plan design changes that really impacted certain employees in a really negative way. While it's never pleasant to have premium increases, it's better to have the predictability in the small doses than the sudden things like what occurred a few years ago, where suddenly some adjustments had to be made.
With seventeen fifty-five, one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five individuals in our plan, we obviously have to have the population in order to reap some cost-saving benefits, but do we want, do we want more people on our plan to get even more benefit? Or do we want to try to discourage people from joining our plan?
Well, I think, you know, use of terms is important here, right? So we want to have a benefits package that recruits and retains, okay? So that can look a lot of different ways, and, and, you know, in, in, we want it to be attractive. At the same time, I will, I'm not going to lie to you, if an employee who's not on our plan saves more money than an employee who is on the plan. So I don't know that I necessarily need to discourage, but what I do need to do is really look at where are more of the costs? And really, our plan over the next year is really to convene a benefits committee, including staff, to really look at what incentives are, matter to you? What are plan design elements that matter the most? Because honestly, as Mr. Sarno and, and I have looked at this, plan design hasn't been touched from a big-picture standpoint in probably about seven years. And I get concerned that maybe our incentives are getting a little stale and maybe not appealing to what employees really want. There are certain factors, for example, I can tell you from our analysis, that the families on our family plan compared to a norm group have bigger families in the West Bend School District. It's not a bad thing, it's just a truth, right? It's good. We have people who are, have growing families, that are often part of our community, and that's great, then they come to our schools, and that's awesome. But at the same time, there's a real impact from that. I mean, our family size is probably about a half-person, if you can count it that way, half-person larger than the norm group. That means the average plan is going to cost you a, a good amount more. So, you know, I, I think you want to encourage people to have options that make them want to work here, but also options where the cost of being on such a plan is not so, and premium is not so extravagant that you can't take advantage of.
Yeah. I should rephrase that a little bit. I certainly want our employees to be on our plan, and, and you're right, it's part of our total benefits package. In my company, and it's not uncommon, though, that my spouse has a spousal surcharge. In other words, Caterpillar does not want my wife on my plan if she's offered a plan through her employer. She kind of has to take that, otherwise she gets charged a surcharge, which is substantial. We don't have a surcharge, correct?
We do not.
And would it, would it be advantageous for us to look at that down the road?
I think that's, as I talk about, a benefits committee over the next year. I think that, along with a number of other options, would be things we would present to the group and really determine, are we aligning our benefits package in a manner that the employees at all engage with, right? Or is it such a slam dunk that it's either you're on or you're not versus kind of a middle ground? I think we, we need to go to our employees and, and ask, and start to ask those questions about, "Listen, there's a lot of different things you can do. We don't, we use HRAs, we don't use HSAs, you know? We do all, there's other kinds of ways you can divide up family versus single versus multiple children, you can do all kinds of different things." And actually, a lot of that flexibility comes from the fact that we're self-funded, you can do more things with your premiums than that. But what is appealing to our employees and what isn't about our plan? And, you know, how do they want to use their healthcare? And are we providing those options and providing them in the most cost-effective way? So we will be soliciting that feedback in the coming year, and that information will actually be shared, as I said, as I put out communication to the staff in the coming days, about this proposal, where we want to take this, because I think we've got a, a really great direction in terms of collaborative development that we can take this. That, that hasn't historically been utilized in our system, and I'm excited to, to kind of shift our process there.
Great, thank you.
I like that you're going to put that together, a committee of sorts or survey, whatever that looks like, to the employees to see what they want, that's, that's very important. If our stop-gap insurance provider offers the possibility to cap coverage, I, I would like to see what type of savings that could provide and see if that's an option that, depending on what kind of savings that could offer, if that's something that our employees might consider in lieu of other, other ways to save.
In, in our discussions about stop-gap coverage, I don't know that that's real common. What's, what's more common, which we've been fortunate to avoid, is what they call lasers, which are where the stop- are where the stop-gap insurer says, well, that employee, and it's called laser because they're laser pointing at that one, it's too costly, we're not paying for them this year. We've avoided that, and our broker has helped us avoid those situations, which are kind of common, but really, I don't know that like a maximum cap of amounts the stop-gap cover would provide is common, but I will investigate.
Okay. And the reason, I'm coming in from the approach of the customer, our employees, and it's very common in most private companies for employees to say they have, you know, a maximum lifetime benefit for health insurance. So I guess the language of how that's presented would be similar to what teachers would find as they talk to their friends that work outside of the education world.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So again, we're not taking action on this tonight, this is for information, and appreciate sharing the information. Obviously, a lot of work and great exhibits. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next item on our agenda then is to discuss the board meeting calendar. So upcoming, we have two meetings, well, the next two meetings, I should say, one in September, September 28th is the 101st Annual Meeting, which we had talked about earlier, that will take place here in the West Bend High School Silver Lining Arts Center. Then, our next regular school board meeting will take place on October 5th, and we have that location set at this time for the Education Service Center back on Main Street. I think the mandatory mask requirement is currently set to expire at the end of September, we'll see what happens there, but right now, it's set for the Education Service Center. Any questions on that? All right. The next item then would be, any items for follow-up and communication, anything that needs to come before the board at this time? All right, hearing none, we have reached the end of our planned agenda, and so I would move to adjourn the meeting. Second from Nancy, thanks. Motion and second to adjourn, any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. Thanks, everyone, we are adjourned.